Parker?
Yes.
McDermott?
Yes.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Here. Item two, open meeting compliance statement.
I am the undersigned clerk of the Board of Education of the Alba Independent School District, number one of Woods County, Oklahoma, certified that prior to December 15 of the last calendar year, the date, time, and place of this regular meeting was filed in the office of the County Clerk of Woods County, Oklahoma. I also certify that at least 24 hours prior to this meeting, excluding Saturdays, Sundays, and holidays, notice of the date, time, place, and agenda of this meeting was posted in prominent public view of the location of the week meeting witnessed by hand this fourth day of November 2013.
Item number three, consent agenda. All of the following items, which concern reports and items of routine nature, normally approved at a board meeting, will be approved by one board, but unless any board member desires to have a separate vote on any or all of these items, the consent agenda consists of discussion, consideration, and approval of the following items. Three A, addition of items and new business. Do you have any?
No.
Okay. Three B, minutes of October 7, 2013, ready for the board meeting. Three C, approval of the treasurer's report on the status of funds and investments. Three D, approval of activity fund report. Three E, approval of activity account fundraisers. Three F, child nutrition report.
Okay, treasurer's report, the general fund revenue sheet that you always get. Again, gross production is up to $214,000, down a little bit from September, but again, we've collected 69 percent of the total year for gross production. I think the last number on the right-hand column, that $702,027.92, is a pretty important number because that is what we are up compared to last year total at this point in time. So, things are looking good. Again, our encumbers comparison, you have that sheet, will show that we are up a little bit in our general fund warrant and also the encumbers. But a lot of that is just due to the fact that we raised salaries and added some positions and so forth, but right now, we look real good with our money situation like we did last year. So, very happy with our general revenue at this point in time. Any questions over that?
So, the $702,000, the improvement over last year, that's just for four months. July obviously is different.
Up through October, yes.
That's really good.
Yes, it is.
And that $505,000 of it is gross production, right?
It's the way I read it.
Sounds kind of off the hook.
But again, see, that $726.716, that negative, that's the difference between the carryover. And, you know, we had to get our carryover down, or we were going to lose that type of money through losing state aid this year and so forth. So, if we collect like what we are with our gross production, because of what we did this year with carryover, we're not going to have to worry about that loss of state aid because we took care of it, even though we collect more. But right now, everything looks good. We're trying to watch what we're spending and so forth each and every month and getting better on it. Activity funds, all in good shape. Still got a lot of money out for basketball, a lot of the shoes haven't been paid for, so they look a little shaky in that respect, but there's still a lot of students that have to pay their shoes, come back to that account. But everything looks pretty strong.
When is that usually taken care of, or do they take care of it, or is there someone to?
Right now, what we're basically, Becky and I talked to Coach Smith and Coach Duncan. A lot of the boys' shoes are waiting on, the boys still playing football, to pay for their shoes. They went ahead and ordered them like everybody else did to get the good prices, but they haven't paid for them, so there's like 12, 15. So, there's $1,500 right there of shoes that haven't been paid for, so. And then they've ordered some traveling shirts and so forth, and those will be paid for when everybody gets on the, after basketball, before they make the first trip. I don't know, did you all know that Baptist is no longer, by the way? They actually have gone out and been purchased by Lids?
Lids.
Lids. And they're out of?
Minneapolis.
Minneapolis. They will still work with us with everything that we've ordered this year, go through there, but Baptist is no longer. So, we've gone through a transition through Larry Black to Baptist now, it's Lids out of Minneapolis, and it's going to create some problems for us in all of our activities if we purchase those types of things like we did with Baptist in that transition period. So, we're going to have a meeting tomorrow with the administrators, make sure that we got all of our POs signed, numbers and everything from this point on, before we can order because of the transition there. But that just happened within the last month. Okay. Child nutrition report, you got that in front of you, Melita fixed it. Roughly, the total expenditures, October 1 through October 31st, were about $48,000. Our income and inventory comes up to about roughly $53,000. So, we're in good shape there, we're still in the black. A lot of the expenses come out earlier in the year, so we wish, she said that we would get over that 570 students and get a little bit more eating lunch, but right now, that's what that averages. So, child nutrition looks pretty good at this point in time also. I don't know if you all remember or not, but last year, when we give you this report, it was not a labor, we decided to give you a labor cost per month too. So, that $15,000 is what we do on the labor for child nutrition as part of the expenses. But we're still in the black, still look good, wish we served a little more meals. Mostly, we wish we'd served more at the high school, but that's not happening. Okay, any other questions on?
Is it by law, do we have to have a program at the high school?
That's a good question. I don't, I don't know that answer, to be real honest with you. I know that for years, we bust kids down to the middle school to eat there, and we probably had less than 18 eating then at this point in time. We probably average around 35, 40 up there now, eating, so we've doubled the number of students eating up there. We actually only have one cook up there, and then through voc rehabilitation, vocational rehabilitation, we have some students that help, and they get paid to do that, they also get credit for that, so our expenditures aren't very high in there because of just one employee at that point in time, so, you know, we'd just like to see them eat a little bit more there, you know? I ate there forever, didn't hurt me, and good food overall. Any other questions on those?
I know we pre- three A, three B. Sessions? Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Hi.
Ellis?
Item four, vote to approve or not approve the purchase order of encumbrances for the following funds for FYI 2014. Four A, general fund number 11, number 365 through 401 inclusive, with change orders number 1 through 401 inclusive, and payroll number 50,001, 161 through 50,177 inclusive, with payroll change orders 50,000 through 50,177 inclusive, for a year-to-date total of $7,361,622.57. Four B, cooperative education fund number 12, number 48 through 53 inclusive, with change orders number 1 through 53 inclusive, and payroll change orders 50,000 through 50,011 inclusive, for a year-to-date total of $568,412.25. Four C, building fund number 21, 54 through 61 inclusive, with change orders number 1 through 61 inclusive, and payroll change orders number 50,000 through 50,004, for a year-to-date total of $381,137.34. Four D, child nutrition fund number 22, 48 and 49 inclusive, with change orders number 1 through 49 inclusive, and payroll change orders 50,000 through 50,008 inclusive, for a year-to-date total of $351,313.49.
Okay, general fund expenditures, really not anything out of the ordinary this month. Direct technology purchase order 381, that is to help our schools to get Wi-Fi in every building or every classroom, so we had to add some things with that expenditure. And again, that will just help us later on in the testing this spring. Merrifield office supply, $5,000, purchase order 385. We no longer have a central supply, so that's an open purchase order, so that all five sites can go to Merrifield to get what they need. If you've got any questions on any of the others, you can see some expenses for ag. Of course, they've been very busy. We had a judge team go to the National Convention of Louisville, and they got fourth out of 49, am I stealing your thunder? They were fourth in the nation, and Corey Deach was fourth overall out of about 200 entries. And then we had a young FFA group go to the American Royal of Kansas City, and they got X. So, had some expenses on some motel rooms and so forth. Also had some expenses for Terry Owen on 367, and that was during the Tulsa Fair and also Richard Burton, getting kids back and forth to the Tulsa Fair and also to football games. So, our kids have made those events and also came back and played in football games. But nothing really, unless you've got a question on the general fund there on that front page. Second page, all pretty much substitutes. Purchase order 5162, Mary Hamilton, it's a long-term sub for Flader that just had a baby, and that's not her maiden name, but her maiden name is Potter. And she should be back by the first? Oh, she did get back today? Good. And the rest of them are just substitutes for different people. Co-op fund, purchase order 48, Phyllis Bowing, is a contracted OTA, OTA, so that is her salary for the first three months. That's why that's the OTA. Occupational therapist aid. And the rest of the normal expenditures for the co-op. Building fund, seem like we're having lots of problems with plumbing this year. I know we've had a lot of repairs, long-fella bathrooms, rose plumbing for $2,000. And also, we've had some, at Washington, purchase order 59, we had to replace a heating element up in the media center that's been there for 10 years, and also some air conditioning that, music, that those are taking care of now.
Isn't the music from the air conditioner, isn't that relatively new? I mean, like, the last two years or three years?
No, it's five years.
Well, they ought to last longer, five years?
You would tell it, Coach, but I'm telling you why. It doesn't work. You call them, you get one person coming in, and they tell you one thing, you get somebody else, and we are honestly trying to get at least two calls on any of this big work when they tell us it's a major unit, or it's a motor out, or any of that, you know? I know Tracy called three different plumbers on that, just to see what they thought it was, because we called the officials out of here to come back and look at it, and they finally said, you know, we had to replace the motor or something in it, and, you know, so. But we did, we tried to get at least two people come in and look at it, and when they tell us first thing, then it's a major thing. Because we're at that, we no longer have Harold telling us what we can do, what we can't do.
Do we have a plan for replacing these units?
We started one last year, when, two years ago, the board went around and looked, and we've got the air conditioners kind of a cycle, and watch the oldest, and we'll look at it again this spring and try to replace at least five to eight air conditioners and go from the oldest. You know, at one time, they even said, you know, that you could purchase leased type of thing, but we haven't found that to be true yet on there. But we are trying to rotate those out because of the years that they're in there and so forth. And then child nutrition, again, some repairs to some of the kitchen rugs, and got all those completed, so I think we're pretty much up to par on all of our kitchen equipment at this point in time. Any questions on any of the expenditure?
I make a motion to reaffirm that. Four A through four D.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Hi.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Item, our principals report, starting with principals.
Well, I really don't have a lot. We've got 200 kids and babies being at the co-op, 91 kinder, 91 first, been working on observations, we're observing Veterans Day, we're sending classes to people like senior citizens and people from places like that, helping Northwest Family Services with their art project that they're doing. And the new thing, we're going up on the 26th to a women's basketball game at Northwestern at 1:00, and they're having area schools come in and posting everything, and that's about it. Other than that, we're trying to add more.
We have 99 pre-K students, 55 second graders, 67 third graders, for a total of 221. Tomorrow, we have the sheriff's department coming to our school to fingerprint all of our pre-K students. For safety purposes, no. On the 11th, on the 11th, we have our Veterans Day programs. On the 25th, we have Kids Against Hunger, and then on the 26th, we go up to Northwest for the women's basketball. So, and that's about it for us.
Okay, we have 71 fourth grade, 73 fifth graders, for a total of 144. I want to commend our students on our food drive, they brought a lot of food, we'll be away in that tomorrow, and away in class, it's a pizza party. We'll be attending the Northwestern Children's Show on the 15th of November, and we also put the basketball game on the 26th, and then I want to also mention our book fair, which is December 2nd through 6th. It's kind of out there, but depending on when next.
As of today, we have 69 sixth graders, 77 seventh graders, 74 eighth graders, for a total of 220 students in the whole school. Parent teacher conferences right before break, we saw 70 percent of our parents, which was up from 57 percent from last year, so we're pretty happy with that. We had Kids Against Hunger last week, and our students packed 25,272 meals in the day of Kids Against Hunger. Don't have any final tally on how much money we raised though, and this is good to get back to the senior population. We also had a book fair last week, or a couple of weeks ago, we're real happy with that, besides the fact that Mrs. White has gotten several national awards with her last three book fairs. This time, she set a goal of 600 AR points for our students to gain during book fair, they gained over 1,400. So, this week, they've done a couple of rewards that they're going to get for things along with that. Football's over, finished with record of 4-3. Basketball started today, scrimmage today, first official game starts next Tuesday, club tournament. We'll also have Veterans Day assembly that day at 10:30, and we will also be going to Northwest for the basketball game on the 26th.
Mr. Atkins?
The high school's got 61 ninth graders, 68 10th graders, 66 11th graders, and 58 12th graders, total of 253. Mr. Parkus was talking about our GWA group, very successful. The choir also had, and I didn't write the names down, but eight kids advanced to the second round in choir. We're making a big effort for this week's football game, it's the last football game. We're having a bonfire Thursday night, and we're trying to invite all the, the whole community. We're going to assemble at the high school at 7:00, and then march over to the fire training area and have the bonfire. I think it's conflicting a little bit with the culture show, we're going to have to, may have to do a little bit on that. But on Friday, we're having a big pep assembly in the gym, the new gym. And I'm reaching out, and I'm inviting all the board members to be there, Mr. Parkus to be there. We're trying to connect our past with our today, our future, and we want to really make it special for this group of seniors. This will be their last home game. If we win Friday, we play home again, but if we don't win Friday, we'll go on the road for the playoffs, so.
What time's the pep assembly?
2:30, 2:30. And the board members will be involved in the pep assembly.
I won't make it. I'm just kidding. My wife will kill me if I'm not there.
Well, she's going to be there too, yeah. That's all great. But that's it for the high school.
Speed! Yeah. Okay. October 1st, an important date for the schools in the state of Oklahoma, and our administrators and secretaries worked very hard trying to get in all of our accreditation reports. We have class odds, we have accreditation, we have first quarterly statistics and so forth, and I'm proud to say that we got them all into the State Department on time, and also got a letter from Janet Barisi's office that Alba Public Schools has been compliant with section 1119 and the Elementary and Secondary Education Act regarding 100 percent highly qualified teachers in this system. So, very few, I guess, school districts have that, and we're very fortunate with that. Everybody that we've got teaching right now is highly qualified. And we'll get a lot of this information certified tomorrow. Our accreditation officer, Ken Hale, will be here sometime to over all of this. When I looked at our preliminary numbers, I thought 1,024 students is what we reported for our total enrollment for that October, and if these numbers are correct, 1038 is what we have now, if I had it correctly. So, we might get a midterm adjustment a little bit, but the secretaries and principals worked very hard to get all these completed because they've changed some things. The next item on the agenda is one of the things that they've changed, that we had to go back and do some things, because they're trying to put everything on what they call the wave, so that they can get all of that statistical information off of one side and pull it from ours. Well, sometimes, the wave and our own student information don't coincide, so these people have to go back and make sure that the numbers match, and that takes some time, so I appreciate what the administrators and secretaries did during this month to get all this taken care of, and we're in good shape with all of our reports at this point in time. Coach Pete?
When do we get our quote grade cards?
Well, whenever the state, depends on when they're going to actually give them. I understand that they're going to vote on it November 6th, but I got an email, did you all get the same email, that it's on our site now, and that's the official grade card at that point in time?
I looked today, and I couldn't find our grade card, our grade, but not the entire card.
So, I'm not sure, because I got on there, and I could see the individual, but I'm like, Steve, I couldn't find the overall grade report for the school. I will tell you, since you brought it up, Coach, that our grades are going to be lower than what they were a year ago, and there are a couple of reasons why. First of all, they raised catch scores of some tests after the fact. Also, our special needs students in the past have taken a modified test, and last year, we were told that because this year, there are not going to be any modified tests, that we need to get our special needs students ready to take the test itself and not get any modified, okay? So, not only are those students taking a more stringent test than they've taken before, but even those tests, those catch scores have raised. In order for a student or for a school district to get a better report card, our students, especially at the bottom quartile, have to get out of that unsatisfactory to at least limited knowledge. I don't know what the numbers are, so I'm just going to throw you out some numbers. So, if unsatisfactory is zero to 500, okay? That's the range. If we have any students that were in that unsatisfactory and raised it, but didn't raise it above 500 to get limited knowledge, we don't get that, count that student. So, if a student raised his score 200 points, let's say, but stayed in that same quartile, we don't get to count him, even though he improved. And I think that's what the whole business of everybody not saying that this A to F, the way they're reporting it, is unfair to students, is because they're not giving you or that student that recognition that they have raised their score, because they haven't gone up to that next level. because they haven't gone up to that next level. I know four years ago, when we started working with what's called a test force, we told our students that if we could raise our students up from the bottom quartile up each and every year, that we would be very successful. And that's what it's trying to do. But at this point in time, there's a double whammy on these kids because they raised the cut score, the tests are harder, and yet the special needs students aren't getting any modifications whatsoever. So, almost every school in the state of Oklahoma will have a lower A to F. Now, our overall, I think, is going to be somewhere around a C-plus to a B from what the indications are. So, but we may have some low schools, especially Lincoln and Allen Middle School because of the number of special needs students that took the test a year ago. And then they didn't take the modification. But I really don't think it's fair to those students.
Is there any way we can get out of not even taking those stupid tests?
Uh, you know, I don't know. You know, everybody's discussed that, and you know, you read the papers. Governor Fallon, she wants to warn the school districts about A to F and criticism because how could she fight for the schools for more money if we're bickering about A to F report cards? Well, I think it's legit. You know, I think it's hurting our students, you know? It's hurting the morale, you know? Here you are asking teachers to eventually put a third of their teaching credentials and evaluations on student scores. And yet, we can't even get a cut score prior to taking a cut, prior to taking a test, you know? Because they changed the biology cut scores after the students took the test. We've got some writing problems, you know? We wanted some kids regraded. So, we called the State Department. They want to send us back to the testing company. The testing company wants to charge us a hundred and twenty-five dollars per test to regrade. Now, how is that fair?
Somebody's just making a lot of money, and they don't care about the test.
Well, I don't think there's an educator in the state of Oklahoma, Coach P, that doesn't want to be held accountable, okay? But give us a fair play fee, okay? Let's get something consistent. Let's get, you know, something that we can live with. Because, you know, they're there to help kids. They're there to help them. So, we just need to work this out because I don't think anybody's against reporting to the public on how well we do because our public schools get our kids prepared very well. There's no doubt about it. But we struggle in some areas, and we know that. So, I think we'll have a report to the next board meeting about our A to F, and it will be official as of that point in time.
Well, you know, you read in the papers where one school gets a grade, and then the next day, they change the grade, and then they change another. You know, I don't think the lady down there in the city knows what she's doing.
Well, and then we have the right for due process, and we called. And we had people in the State Department tell us, well, what do you want me to do? We just got four days. And then it's official. Like, they don't have time to help us out, to check our concerns out. Because they don't have the manpower.
Our special ed numbers still higher than maybe our peers, or is that?
For our school, size of school district compared to around, I don't know for sure. I know that we have people that want to come to the Allen Public Schools because of our special ed program because we do a great job of special ed kids. We really do. And they want to move here for that. You know, we've got students that are on five oh fours to help them. We've got all kinds of accommodations. Just look at the number of paraprofessionals that we hire each year to help our students. Now, we spend a lot of money on paraprofessionals to help those kids.
But those, one year ago or so, we looked at our IEP numbers were significantly higher than the ratio.
Yeah, and to this day, I don't know how to figure that two percent ratio. And that's what got us in trouble on the test.
Yes, okay.
Okay? Because, you know, you sit down with a committee of experts when you talk about teachers, special ed, and then you talk with the parents, and these particular children are having problems in certain areas, and they qualify for modifications for that. So, we can't just turn our back on them and say, well, we can't do that because we're already over our two percent.
Exactly. I understand. I just didn't know whether that was. That situation is affecting this A to F because of how they're tested, correct?
Yes.
I mean, I think that's.
That's my belief to a certain degree.
That's the way I understood it at that time.
Because if you have twenty-five special ed students that are taking the test, and if they can't get on a regular test without any modifications, if they can't move from satisfactory to limited knowledge or limited knowledge to proficient, we don't get to count them. They count against us. So, yes, that's where we get the low grades.
Yep.
Okay? Anything else? No, that's fine, Coach, because, you know, it is frustrating. But we are not against the A to F. I don't think there is anybody out there. You know, we want to be held accountable for what we do because we do a good job. There's no doubt about that.
It needs to be fair.
It does need to be fair and consistent.
I don't think it's fair. I just think it affects different regions different.
But it's not when you consider that the kids can't take a modified, you know?
With that same.
And it's saying to that teacher, you know, your class, like, if you say algebra, your class, and you are, you're not, it looks like that teacher's not instruct, the instruction's not good, and it looks like it's a failure on the teacher, you know?
Also, Leonard, you were a teacher. When you have federal guidelines on all these special needs students, and teachers have to modify their educational goals and objectives to meet that particular student's skills, okay? They may not even get close to fifty percent of the third grade objectives that need to be taught to pass the reading test.
Well, when I, when I was teaching second grade, we, the first couple of years, the students went to a special education teacher during testing time, and she gave them modified tests.
Absolutely.
That whole modified test was scored, and then my class was scored. And, you know, the difference then, in the next couple of years, when that group had to take the same test that everyone in my class took, my total score went down, and it affected the whole score. And that happened in every class.
Absolutely. Because these special needs students are being tested on what the state of Oklahoma requires all third grade teachers, third grade students to achieve. And yet, those kids may be on first grade material, and they haven't mastered that. But yet, they're being tested on third grade.
Plus, their test-taking skills.
Absolutely.
Their test-taking skills are different. They're taught differently in their daily classes than they are when that is put down in front of them. Some of them are even being taught by maybe a recorder. They're listening, or their test is being given on a recorder. You know, they're not writing it down. And so, when you slap a test right in front of them, it's going to be, it's going to be different.
Absolutely.
But that same thing is happening in every school. The difference would be, maybe Allen has a more in that category that's affecting our overall score. And that's where we are. We have identified more kids, well, we talked all about that. But anyway, the same rules apply to every school. It just, how many, does Allen have more special needs kids?
I don't know that that's true, but because I'm not that good at statistics.
I'm not either.
You know? So, when you have seventy kids in the total class, and you have fifteen special ed, is that a higher percentage than what the others? I don't know. And I think that's what you're asking.
And how low and how high are their special needs?
Absolutely.
You know, we may have, we may have a greater percent of lower students than maybe another school does. Maybe they have a higher percentage of kids just, you know, that could probably be in regular class that are in special needs class, you know? The difference in the abilities could be wide.
Sure. Actually, a question, Coach?
Yeah.
I wished it was easy. I really did.
Well, I just, I just know it's just a big pain in the.
It is. Okay?
I'm sorry I brought it up.
No, you're fine.
Out of seven, a discussion of possible board action approval of Leonard to Oklahoma State Department of Education accreditation section in regard to relocation of pre-K to Longfellow Elementary School.
This has to do with part of the statistical reports that we were doing. Steve could not complete some of those because of pre-K being there. And when we called last spring about, you know, do we need to notify anybody that we're moving pre-K to a different building? They said, no, that's your right. But because the kids didn't show up from the wave to the student information, they asked me to write this letter and for you all to approve it at the next board meeting. So, I'm asking you to approve this letter that we've already sent to the State Department.
I made motion to approve the letter.
Tiffany, was that you?
Yes.
Okay, I'm sorry. Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Right.
Parker?
Yes.
Ellis?
Hi. Seven D, discussion of possible board action, annual election resolution, call for school election. We'll vote for a board of education member from office.
Okay, this is the regular Woods County Elections Board notice and annual school elections. Lady Carol used to present all this to us for us. No longer can he, so the Oklahoma School Board Association. So, I've been in contact with our election board. This is all the information they need for, which is Leonard Martin's seat number four. And also, we recommend that we close four precincts. Woods County precinct seven, six, oh, 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 eight. They had eleven in there, and last year, zero voted out of that. And then in Alfalfa County, we would like to close oh-two, oh-one, one-zero. Have six voters in there, and five voted last year. And oh-two, oh-three, one-zero had ten in that precinct, and last year, one voted. And I think you're one of those precincts that we want to close. But. The Woods County Election will send out that information on how people will vote and where to vote and get all that to you. But we have to approve this resolution, resolution as presented by the Oklahoma School Board Association.
Is it a cost-savings nation?
Uh, not a whole lot, no. Just convenience because of the numbers of people voting in those areas. You may have people there all day long, nobody shows up.
But where are some of the precincts located? Do you know? Are you sitting on with an Alfalfa County?
There's one in that direction.
There's two in Alfalfa County. Oh-two, oh-one, one-zero, and it has six voters in it. And oh-two, oh-three, one-zero had ten, legally. Last year, they had one vote out of ten and five out of that. But with less than a hundred, we can have them closed indeed.
They can vote absentee.
They can vote absentee, and then go to another precinct to vote. But all that information will be sent out by the election. Now, if we don't have a person running against, if Leonard chooses for seat four, then we won't have to have a vote because it's automatic in Woods County on the mail letter. So, basically, all we'd be voting on is seat number four for the Allen Public Schools.
Is that just close those precincts for this?
Yes, for this election only.
Is that their recommendation?
Yes.
Public relations. Not a nice move. I don't know, maybe.
I don't know. I'd feel differently about that.
I do, too. I think that.
We don't have to. If we want, we want to leave them open, we can leave them open, and that's.
I think a lot of elementary people possible to come over.
I agree.
I, I think it's, I think it's wrong.
I do, too. It's a convenience.
Uh-huh. We took their, we asked them in.
Then we could, we could do a motion to accept Woods County election proposal and not do anything about closing it anymore in the motion.
That would be my recommendation.
Make the motion.
And we will open.
Is that your motion?
Yes, sir. It's my motion.
I second that.
Okay.
McDermott?
Hi.
Martin?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Ellis?
Hi. Out of seven seats, discussion of possible board action. Board meeting dates for the calendar year 2014.
Again, you had the schedule, and Joanne, Becky, Terry, and I all looked at the dates. Pretty much corresponding. There are a couple of different, like, January thirteenth, just because of the holidays. Felt like it might be easier to do it on the thirteenth rather than that Tuesday or whatever. And then we have June twenty-sixth on a Thursday, and that's our end of the year meeting to try to get fiscal year 2014 taken care of. And again, five o'clock. Everybody agrees on the five o'clock time and like that. So, these are the dates that I'd recommend to the board that we have for the calendar year 2014 for our board meetings.
I saw movement.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
McDermott?
Hi.
Martin?
Yes.
Ellis?
Hi. Seven D, presentation of the dropout rate book 2012, 2013.
You know, I don't know how many years it's been, but several now, Steve?
Yeah.
That basically, high school principal has to give a report on dropout rate each and every year to the Board of Education.
Straightforward, it's by quarter from September to September. The two that were in the second quarter, or the first, actually, first quarter and the second quarter of the dropout rate. They, one got married, and one went to work for the oil field. And the ones this, on the last page, they all, the first three, they all have gone to other school districts, but they did not re-enroll until after the September thirtieth deadline. But they'll go on the reentry report. And the final one, she did, she liked one credit. We made arrangements for her to come and get that one credit, but she decided she wasn't going to do that, so.
Uh, Markey had been working since there as a cook, and at this point in time, Verlita and myself would like to recommend Markey to be employed as a four-and-a-half-hour cook at Lincoln School.
I'll send them.
Second. McDermond?
Hi.
Barton?
Yes.
Ellis?
Hi.
Parker?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Wasn't Rizman signing about this stuff earlier?